Order, please rise for Mayor Michael Fugere.
Please be seated. Thank you everyone for being here in this special meeting of the City Council for March 27th. Before we get into the main agenda item at hand, I want to speak to the Missus Heritage Awards that we're giving out tonight. This is our forced order of business to award recipients of the 2017 City Regina Municipal Awards, Missus Heritage Awards. It's my pleasure to welcome the individuals, the selection committee, and the family, guests, and friends for this very special ceremony. These awards do a great job in shining a spotlight on the part of our community that all too often goes overlooked until it's too late. There's been some truly remarkable work done this year on some very prominent buildings. And so it's amazing to take the time to see the dedication that's done to all the work across our city. We as City Council are truly thankful for that investment in preserving our rich history. I would now like to invite Councilor John Ferndura to tell us about the awards programming to introduce the 2017 award recipients. I'm inviting this year's recipients to come forward as Councilor Ferndura announces your name and it would be my pleasure to present you with your award. Councilor Ferndura.
Thank you worship. Good evening everyone. I'm honored to be here with such a distinguished group of individuals and organizations that believe it is important to conserve our history, historic places, and heritage buildings. And that is equally important to commemorate and celebrate the rich culture and collective history of our community. These historic places and heritage buildings are living proof of our past. They give us a glimpse into the lives of those who came before us and who helped to create the life and communities we live in today. Since 1984, and including today's awards, the city has presented 127 awards to individuals and organizations that have made an outstanding contribution to the celebration of Regina's collective history and conservation of Regina's historic places. But your worship, if you'll allow me, before we continue with presentation, I would ask the evaluation committee members that are with us tonight to stand and be recognized. So I would call Mr. Joe Walco, please stand, and Mr. Ken Mazinski. Please give them a nice round of applause. Very important members of our heritage community. This year's awards will be presented in four categories. Our large recipients, please come forward for representation when you call upon and take stands aside beside the mayor after receiving your awards. A good photo will be taken by our photographer with the recipients, with the certificates. You can then return to the seat after you have a picture with the mayor. And for fellow friends, if you were interested to take a quick photo, please wait until our photographer takes the picture, official photo, and then you can take one. Our official photos will be Saturday, April 8th, little post on the city page. And now let's begin, worship. Our first award is a rehabilitation category. We have six certificates for each of the groups receiving the awards. This category is for the sensitive adaptation of historic place for contemporary use while protecting its heritage value. This is achieved through repair, alterations, or additions. This 2017 award recognizes work done at the Vitara Building as known to us as Old Sherwood Department Store and the Foreign Head Office of Saskatchewan Weed Pool. This project will be rehabilitating the 1913 Pre-First World War Department Store designed by the Chicago style by Montreal Architecture Firm of Brown and Valance. In fact, this is the only department store in its kind remaining in Regina. Luckily, replacing the 1970s windows with ones that reflect the original design, restoring the decorative east iron spindle panels below the upper floor windows, repairing taraga details, and installing a virtual air barrier system to pressurize the wall cavity with warm air. The repair, repelling, and replacement work has brought new life to this important and permanent heritage building. Now your worship, I ask following individuals to come and accept the awards. From Vitara, Carl Jaworski. Kevin Holberg. From Montreal Architect, Architect Limited, Roger Mitchell. And Jessica Gibson. And from PRC Construction Management, Justin Lush. Dennis De Zeeoto. And Denise Bowen. And from Blackstone, Missland Incorporated, Jeff Krosier. And from Tether and Brass Limited, Carl Palcher. And from JC Kelly Engineering Incorporated, Brad Taylor. We good? Give them a nice round of applause. Am I in? What do you want me? Yes, yes. Any family members? The next award is in the restoration category. We have two certificates for the groups receiving the award. This category is for representing the state of the historic place or of an individual and component as a particular part of its history as accurately as possible while protecting its heritage value. This award goes to Saskatchewan Registered Building Dome. This project involves restoration of a copper roof and timber stone base of the dome of the most prominent heritage building in Regina, possibly in Saskatchewan. Luckily, erecting 80,000 kilograms of steel hoarding around the dome to create a climate control enclosure to allow mortar and grout to set. In total, 450 people worked on this project, repairing 7,000 stones and installing 13,000 kilograms of new copper roofing. All works were completed using tools and detail consistent with methods used during the 1909 to 1912, when the Regina Dome was constructed. This work will ensure that Saskatchewan Registered Building and its copper dome will remain an important landmark and enhance our building environment for many years to come. From Saskatchewan Register of Central Services, I ask following individuals to come up and accept the awards. Nancy Churney. Harlan Kennedy. And Michael Thaves. And from PRC Construction Management, please step forward, Darrell Upstager. Majewski. And Denise Bowen. So the third award tonight is in the new category, addition category. We have three certificates for the group receiving the award. This category is for the addition to an existing heritage building that is sympathetic to and compatible with original building design. The new design addition award goes to Saint Paul's Anglican Cathedral Community Center. The Canadian Center was added to Saint Paul's Anglican Cathedral, the oldest place in the worship in Regina. To meet current accessibility needs, the new community center was constructed adjacent to the northeast corner of the cathedral. And the cluster was constructed to provide access between structures. The design of the additional complements, the cathedral roofline, and matches the color and the material of the existing historic building. Accessibility to the lower level of the cathedral was also created using steel columns and reinforced concrete pads that replaced timber originally used to support the cathedral floor beams. The structure under the cathedral was also strengthened. Now I ask the following individual to come up and accept the award. From Saint Paul Anglican Cathedral, Margaret Hammond. And Joe Melville. And Turner Burnow from the CCR Construction. And from Elton Tangidol, Architect Limited, Elton Tangidol, please. Just hang on, just hold on a second. I think someone must take a picture. We're giving a chance to the audience, family and friends, come closer. Come closer, don't be shy. Thank you. Our final award is in the education category. The education category is award to projects that celebrates and raises awareness of Regina's collective history. This award goes to the downtown Regina Cultural Trailway. This project involves the creation of a walking tour brochure, a website, and a mobile app that highlights historic events such as the Regina Riot and Regina Tornado and people or interests such as Louis Riel and their associated stories. The cultural trailers map and brochure enhances the experience of those taking the walking tour and allows everyone to explore, learn, and appreciate the rich culture and history of our city. Now I ask the following individuals to come and accept the awards. Judith Verisic with the Regina Downtown Business Improvement District. And from the heritage Regina, Jackie Schmidt and Susan Hollinger. Your worship, this, what a great moment, what a good moment we've captured today. Our awards recipients have helped celebrate our history and conserve our historic places by rehabilitating or restoring heritage buildings, designing a new addition to heritage building, and creating highly successful information tool to educate the public about our rich culture and important stories. This award for us, this award for us, the foundation of our inclusive, vibrant, attractive, and sustainable community. And as Regina population continues to grow, it's important that we support our cultural heritage, which includes our collective history and historic places, as well as the tradition, languages, and our resources that defines who we are as a city, because they tell an important story and are valuable to our culture, valuable to our cultural development, our economy, and our environment. So ladies and gentlemen, this concludes our 2017 Municipal Heritage Awards, and congratulations to all the recipients. One more round of applause. And this is good part now. I'd like to invite all of you to head out the door, first left, and there's some food for you. But I can't come, darn it. So one more round of applause and thank you everybody. Maybe we'll just take a couple minutes and we'll convene again in five minutes. Your worship.
Thank you, Councilor Ferndura.
Thank you.
So we'll bring the meeting back to order and thank everyone for being who wants to remain in the gallery. Councilor Bryce.
Thank you. I move in approving the agenda that the communication from Mayor Fugere regarding the 2017 provincial budget implications on the city of Regina's budget be added as a matter of urgent business and that all other items on the agenda be tabled in a special meeting of City Council on Tuesday, March 28th, 2017 at 5:30.
Have a second for that, please. Councilor Hawkins. All those in favor? opposed, let's hear unanimously. So we'll get into the business at hand and ask that Councilor Stevens, please take my chair for me, please. Thank you, Councilor Stevens. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. This is a special meeting of City Council and thank members of Council and the administration for moving the ordinary business at hand to another meeting of City Council tomorrow night. So the purpose of being here tonight is to address the impact of the provincial budget of last week on the City Council and on our budget. And it's important we speak to this issue because it has a direct impact on our budget. In fact, it's so important to our budget that we have to reintroduce our budget again to deal with the issues at hand, the downloads at hand, the cuts and transfers to the city. And we'll all get into this in a few moments as to our opinions and how we can perhaps lessen that impact. So this is, I'll call it an emergency debate to look at those impacts. So I'll be introducing a motion when I close debate and if members of council will agree that we talk about our issues, we talk about ideas of how we can impact the 2017 budget again, and we'll have that brought back by way of a report by the city manager and the administration to a sitting council meeting on November 10th. That would be the intent, and they would take into account the comments that were made at this meeting. April 10th, did I say something different? Okay. No question about that. So to members of council and to the public, I want to talk a bit about the impact, as I will say at a very high level, members of council will delve into different areas of their own choosing, but I want to talk about a couple of areas that are a significant issue to us. And this goes to the way the budget was announced last Wednesday and the confusion that surrounded what came about of what was actually happening. Now, we had some good news in the budget, and there are some good news portions, and I'll certainly grant that to the province. With respect to revenue sharing, that remains intact. We are not losing any money on that. We will see less money because the economy slowed down in the year that it represents, but that is intact and that's good news for everyone. But there are some significant changes that when you peel the onion back and read it and find out, there's more and more that are of a big concern. The biggest one is grants in lieu of taxes. And before I go any further on this discussion, I'm going to ask the administration to give a layman's definition of what are grants in lieu, because that is a new term, I'm sure, for the public. It is not new to our administration nor to members of council. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, what are grants in lieu of taxes?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Grants in lieu are payments that the province has made to municipalities across the province for access to utilities and the rights of way for utilities. So SAS Power and SAS Energy, for example, they pay a grant in lieu of the property taxes so that they can have access to the distribution systems and the rights of way that exist within our community. So up until the budget announcement, we were receiving roughly $18.3 million annually from both SAS Power and SAS Energy. And with the recent announcement, we will now lose in a full year $10.7 million. And projected for, or prorated for 2017, 18, it'll be $8 million.
Thank you for that, Mr. City Manager. So what brings us tonight is that this issue was not discussed with any municipality across the province. We had long discussions about revenue sharing in terms of this is all on the table, everything's on the table, but no time where grants in lieu ever mentioned. And the impact on us, as the city manager said, is about $8 million this year because it's prorated, we're in the middle of our year now, but annualized to about $11 million. That's a hole we've got to fill in this budget this year for the 2017 budget. Thus, the need for an emergency meeting to talk about that. So that's about a 3.8% increase in taxes if we were to increase taxes, and I'm not saying we're going to, that's just to give you an understanding what that is. That's about the equivalent of our winter road maintenance program and our parks maintenance program. That's a lot of money to find right away. We also have the PST, it's been raised from 5% to 6%, and annually, we expect that to see an increase of about $3 million. And that, again, is a significant issue for us as well. And that represents our roadway preservation money of about $1.6 million, or our fire and safety budget, $1.8 million. So the handle that you have, the background, gives you information as to what it is on a prorated basis for this year, the remainder of this year, and what it means into the future. $13.7 million with respect to grants in lieu and the PST, that's what it totals. We have to find that money. And this, if it was one year, that'd be fine. This actually is annualized for a number of years until something changes. So we have to look at our budget differently, providing the essence of services we provide each and every day to an expanding community, but we have this to find. But what is important here is that it was, we did not know about it, there was no telegraphing of that. Some ministers have talked about, well, we talked about everything being on the table, so therefore this was. With respect, it was not. Had we known about this, we could have discussed it and said it's come to some kind of arrangement, to a phase in, to some other issue, because we understand the province's financial circumstances very, very well. But this is a download to us unexpected. Who's going to talk about using reserves? Lots of talk about that. Before I make my comments, then, I'm going to ask the city manager to tell us, what are the purposes of a reserve? All our reserves? Mr. Holden?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The city has a number of reserves, I think right now there's approximately 21, and we're actually just going through a review of reserves that we'll bring forward later this year. But reserves enable the city to smooth out financial impacts that we encounter in terms of the spending decisions that impact property taxes. So we have numerous reserves that we utilize to, you know, pay for operating and capital. And it's a balance in terms of, it also provides, impacts our credit rating. So right now, the city of Regina has a AA+ credit rating, and of course, having reserves available ensures that we're able to maintain that advantage. And we have reserves for services that are very specific. So in terms of our landfill operations, development, fleet replacement, so what happens there is we have current users that pay for the ongoing and future costs of capital. So reserves are really there to ensure that we're able to be sustainable in terms of our planning and have finances in place that allow us to be able to take advantage of other orders of government when they come forward with an infrastructure program. We need to have funding available to us so that we could participate in those programs. So they really are important, and I think we've done a good job in the last number of years in terms of ensuring that, given the significant infrastructure gap that exists, that we've positioned ourselves to be able to be sustainable and effectively take care of the assets that the city owns. of the assets that the city owns.
Great overview. I'll say this in other terms, these resources, these reserves are used to provide for emergencies like flooding that we had a few years ago, to invest millions of dollars in infrastructure projects that will support our growth. So if we drain our resources like this and our reserves over a few years to meet this new obligation, this would be very poor financial planning. We could not sustain this over time. It is not sustainable. So to say we use our reserves misses the point with respect, and I think the provincial government doesn't always understand how cities work. Reserves are sound financial planning to get us through the rough patches, to invest in opportunities, to ensure that our city continues to grow. So that, to me, is not an option. It may be part of the mix this year, but it certainly is not sustainable over time. In fact, we know the province has a $300 million cushion as part of their budget. Maybe they should be looking at smoothing these edges by using that. It is meant for unexpected circumstances or whatever it's for, but to lessen the burden on us, to lessen the downloading on us is quite important. Before I wrap up, I want to talk about the financial management of our city. We talked about this in terms of reserves. This city is not allowed to run a deficit by law. We can't do that. So we use our reserves to some extent to cushion that, but we also have to manage this financially. Very difficult process to go through, and council struggles with this every year, as does the administration. So we hear comments about, why don't you review your operations and see how efficient you are? Well, I can tell you, we've done a course review in 2007. We're in the middle of doing one now for that very purpose. This administration in the budget of 2017 is looking for $2.5 million of savings, over and above the $11 million we're looking for. So let no one be under any illusions that we're just spending money and not looking at efficiencies. We are doing this all the time. So we're already under the microscope in terms of the public perception of what we want. We want to tell people we're actually doing these reserves, these reviews to ensure we're efficient, and we are. We'll find out what that $2.5 million looks like in terms of savings. We'll also find out, of course, how we're going to find the additional $11 million coming forward. So that's important that we do this because it gives the public the knowledge and security of knowing we are efficient in our program delivery, and we're looking for innovation all the time to support the services that we provide each and every day. Wascana Center Authority is also part of this, and I know other members of council will speak to this in great detail. I will say this. We have a change in the governance structure of Wascana Center Authority that concerns me, thus continuing to be an equal partner in managing that park. The report that is the basis for the change was not endorsed by the Board of Directors of Wascana Center Authority. It was a working document. We were asking the province to comment before any decision was made. Well, they made the decision, and now we live with that decision. The last point I'll make, ladies and gentlemen who are watching, is you're going to see a tax increase on education. And Counselor Donald will speak to this, I know, in depth, but I'll say this. When you see your bill, you'll see a $13.5 million increase in your taxes, that's about 10.5% increase. We'll do a weekend to make sure that the public understands where that tax is coming from. That's very, very important. Lastly, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I will be introducing, issuing notice of a motion of referral that I would ask that we refer the contents of the backrider, as well as comments made by members of council, to the administration to come forward, again, for a report as a basis for review of the 2017 budget on April 10th. Thank you very much. So before we get into a list of names to be speaking, I know we all have things you want to say and contribute, just, this is a bit of a different process. We typically have five members of council, there'll be leeway given on that perspective, no question about that, there's lots of questions to the administration. What is different is that I would ask, and we have talked about this earlier, that we want to have suggestions of how we could begin to meet the challenge the province has put on our table, to fill that gap of $11 million. These would not be voted on tonight, they are simply suggestions, and I would ask if a member raises an issue, if someone wants to comment on that, that's fine. I would only ask that we don't duplicate things over and over again. We try to be efficient in our time and usage. But beyond that, members of council, I would ask you, just let me know who wants to speak first, and then we'll make a list, and the administration will be as best they can following the discussion and writing down these notions. And at the end of the discussion, to repeat, we will not be voting on those ideas, we're simply voting on the referral motion I spoke of a moment ago. So I'll open the floor for discussion. Counselor Young.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to begin this evening by talking about Wascana Center Authority, because I think it's such an important change. The consultant's report on the status of the park infrastructure and recommendations for discussion on the governance of the park was commissioned by the Wascana Center Authority Board, and it's a working draft, and it was sent to the cabinet in 2014 to engage in a discussion about the best way to govern the park. The status quo was one of the options. Wascana Center Authority has three landowners, the provincial government, the City of Regina, and the University of Regina. Each owner has three votes. We've been waiting for over two years for that discussion to happen so that the entire report could be released. Last week, the board finally heard from the government that a unilateral decision made by the province to put the park under the Capitol Commission and dissolve the Wascana Center Authority Act. And while this was a viable option for discussion, there was no discussion, and the Wascana Center Authority Board did not approve the report. Part of that unilateral decision changes the voting from three for each owner to three votes for the province, one vote for the city, one vote for the university. Since those votes will determine policy decisions about land use and development in the park, this streamlined board, as it's being called, can make any concerns by the city and the university about land use a moot discussion. I am concerned that the land be used in a way that conforms to the professional master plan that has kept this park as the provincial treasure. The current Wascana Center Authority Act ensures that the owners come to consensus over future park development. In past years, the provincial government has fallen short in meeting its share of obligations to upgrade infrastructure and maintain the park. The City of Regina has increased its share of taking care of the park. We know how important it is to the people of Regina and the people of the province as the seat of government. So the question I am left with is, will funding fall short again, and will development in the park move toward political gain or paying for shortfalls in government spending? I'd like to move now, Your Worship, to compare and contrast the two governments we're talking about here and the transformation process. The government of Saskatchewan has been falling deeper into debt for its entire term and have now put a master plan in place without consultation, without even working out with some of the ministries, some of the details that municipalities need to know to move forward. On the other hand, the City of Regina is financially stable, keeping taxes as low as possible, and using reserves to fund infrastructure and asset replacement. And they maintain a high standard and pours AA+ rating as a financially sound city. We have years of being financially stable and transparent with the way we make decisions and engage the public in consultation. So now the province is calling this transformational change, and I've heard three things from the government about what that means. The first is that everything is on the table. We have been told that many times when asked what this was about. So we were supposed to intuit that that meant grants in lieu for Crown Corps that pay their fair share of city services would disappear? Who would have guessed that municipalities would be subsidizing the Crown Corps? The Minister of Finance also said that some programs are nice to have but not affordable. And what does that refer to? Libraries? Environmental regulation enforcement being sent down to cities to do? Or rebuilding the bridges that have been left to us and all the other downloads that I'm sure people will speak to tonight? And the third thing I heard is that we have reserves to fill the gap. I'm really concerned that there is little understanding of the role of reserves in financial management by this government, because once they disappear, you're open to borrowing, paying higher interest rates, and you're unable to match federal funds for infrastructure renewal. So what does transformational change really mean? Well, I looked up the meaning of transformation. It could mean that change something completely so it's improved. It could mean change the form without changing the value. Harvard Business Review lists eight steps to transformational change. Establishing a sense of urgency. Forming a powerful guiding coalition. Creating a vision. Communicating the vision. Empowering others to act on the vision. Planning for and creating short-term wins. And consolidating improvements and producing still more change. And last of all, institutionalizing new approaches. This government has gone from urgency to institutionalizing with skipping the middle ones, two to seven. There are other ways to look at the term transform, that's a better description of how municipalities are perceiving this particular transformation, and that's the synonyms for transform. A synonym for transform is transfer, downloading. Another cinnamon, cinnamon, pardon me, synonym is cooked, applying heat, like cook the goose. Another one is denature, a term I remember from biochemistry, that the application of some external stress that disrupts the cells so it can't perform. And lastly, disturbed, to interrupt, upset the balance, and throw into disorder, alarm. All of those in some way describe the thoughts and feelings I have about the monumental changes that are being put in place without time for municipalities to plan, to consult, to offer alternative ideas for consideration. They are, in effect, changing our core business. If the provincial government meets its goal of being out of debt in time for the next election, which I think may be the vision, does that mean municipalities will have no reserves left? That municipalities will be forced to assume as much debt as the act allows? That the average small commercial and residential property owners and users of municipal programs will not be able to afford the taxes or fees? The provincial government has the opportunity to talk with municipalities, to recognize the unmanageable hardships they have given to us, to bring us on board with them, to find a reasonable way of improving the way they do business that can take the province forward to a future that's prosperous for all of us. Problems are opportunities for open discussion. We are always open to consultation. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Young, very much. Counselor Hawkins.
This is a budget that comes like a thief in the night. It hides out in dark corners. We all know that the province had a $1.2 billion deficit, that something had to be done, that we were going to have to do our part, and that it was going to be painful. Our quarrel with the province is not that it was tackling this job, far from it. Our quarrel with the province is how it is going about this task. There was no meaningful consultation with the municipalities beforehand, no talk of eliminating the grants that SAS Power and Sask Energy pay in lieu of municipal taxes, and subsequently, only provincial spin relating to municipal revenue sharing and municipal reserves. It's time now to slow some of that spin down. Municipal revenue sharing, based on grants to municipalities of 1% of PST, was intended to produce stable provincial funding. Last year, Regina received $41 million under this program. We were led to believe that some of this might be lost in order to help the province out of its financial difficulties, maybe 5%, maybe even 10%, fair enough. However, the government is now making much of the fact that municipal revenue funding is being preserved. But that's an illusion. The reality is that by eliminating the grants paid by SAS Power and Sask Energy, an amount of approximately $8 million for the balance of this year, and $10 million for each and every year thereafter, the revenue that Regina will receive from the combined municipal revenue funding and grants in lieu will drop by 20% perpetually every year into the future. This is not preserving funding, this is, by sleight of hand, expropriating funding. What the provincial right hand purports to give, its left hand is taking away. What about our city reserves? By law, our city must balance its operating budget each year. As you've heard, the city reserves are there to enable us to keep our budget balanced, to enable us to deal with unexpected emergencies such as heavy snow or flooding, and to enable us to take advantage of shared cost programs and infrastructure programs. Reserves are a necessary part of prudent financial management. The premier and his ministers know that. I know they know that, because in last week's budget, they themselves set up their own $300 million provincial reserve. But there is another, even darker corner to this budget, and my colleague Counselor Young has raised it. It concerns Wascana Park, the park that defines our city. Up until budget night, the park was protected by an authority made up of a partnership between the provincial government, the University of Regina, and our city. That was a governance structure meant to preserve the park as a nature park beyond the reach of short-term interests of any group of politicians. The park was to be saved for the people of Saskatchewan and for all of the generations of the people of Saskatchewan to come. Last week's budget swept that protection away. The budget is proposing a different governance structure, one that would put real control of the park entirely in the hands of the provincial government. We are given no reason for this change. Is it because the provincial government wants to see more building cranes in our park? Is it because the provincial government wants to approve Brandt Industries' proposal to build a commercial office building in the park? Is it because the provincial government wants a free hand to sell off park land in order to relieve the provincial deficit? I don't know the answer to these questions, and I don't know because we haven't been told why the budget would strip away the governance structure that now protects our Wascana Park. So what can we do? I ask this of the media, of Stephanie Langenager, of Murray Mandrick, of Jeff Leo, of the Talk Show Co., of Global, of CTV, and our media friends with us here tonight. You can ask the premier questions. Can you get him to tell us why he is taking over the park? Can you get him to guarantee that our park will be preserved as a nature park for his children and grandchildren and for all of our children and grandchildren? Can you get him to shine some light into this dark corner of the provincial budget? I ask those on social media, and you know the premier reads tweets, can you set up a hashtag, maybe #SaveWascana? And I ask the residents of Ward II, whom I represent, and the citizens of Regina, whom I proudly serve. I proudly serve, can you hear the warning bell ringing? The provincial budget comes like a thief in the night. Now is the time, now is the time to be awake, to be vigilant, and to be on guard for our Wascana Park.
Thank you, Counselor Hawkins. Counselor Murray.
Thank you, Worship. I'll start with a statement that I'm adamant on. I never want to see the day that partisan politics enters Henry Baker Hall. My comments are in light of only the municipal implications of this provincial budget, as well as the effects that it has on my constituents. Being an alternate director to the SUMA Board of Directors, I hope to be able to speak with an amount of authority to this, albeit less than my experienced counterparts, Counselor O'Donnell and Counselor Hawkins. I believe this budget simply takes the provincial deficit and downloads it onto municipalities across our province. We've been instructed by the province that we can simply take money from our reserves. Fiscal responsibility dictates that you never use emergency fund reserves to offset your operating costs. As a city, yes, we have reserves. As our city manager has indicated, we have reserves for three things: emergencies, capital infrastructure investment, and fund matching opportunities. Asking us to take money from these is asking us to throw away our future growth and innovation potential. We had no consultation on these actions whatsoever. As the mayor has explained, this is our entire snow removal budget. Other mayors have said it's their entire city's leisure programs and operations. This could drastically affect our residents. I'd like to phrase this situation as if our city was a homeowner. This is the equivalent of using our savings account to pay our monthly expenses. What happens when the savings are gone? Keep in mind, this $11 million will be missing from our revenue indefinitely. Every year, we'll be another $11 million short. Do you use a credit card to pay for your utility bill? No. As the mayor has said, we do not have the ability to run a deficit. Now, I agree that hindsight is 20/20, and I understand fully and grasp that commodities are down. But I do not see this form of downloading both the financial and political burden in any way as a solution. We have met, cities, sorry, cities are the economic growth engines of our province. We have met every one of the government's growth goals. We deserve better than this, and our residents deserve better than this. The fact that we are being forced to drastically change a budget that our administration diligently researched and helped us form, a budget that we spent months of public consultation creating, I think that's unacceptable. This download undermines not only the future revenue of our city, but more importantly, it undermines the voice, wants, and needs of every one of our residents. As the capital city and the home of the provincial government, I think it's our duty to stand with municipalities across our whole province. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murray. Counselor Fundura.
Thank you, Worship. I didn't sign up for this. What's going on here? This is quite, quite challenging. I was on doorsteps over the weekend, day after the provincial budget came down, and I was volunteering with kidney foundations, I do all the time. And the first comment from, when the door opened, the lady comes out and, she didn't even ask me what I was doing, she recognized who I was, and she says, "Don't you dare raise my taxes. I'm a senior, I'm on a fixed income, what do you think I'm gonna, I can't get another job." So the budget scares me, man, just scares me. It frightens me to what I have to do now in this spot. So I'm going to be looking to the wisdom of the citizen of Regina and industries and our administration and council around me here to make me help, to help me make that decision, because it's not easy. I thought there were some things that we dealt before, it was tough. I don't think, this is probably the toughest decision that's going to face me, or toughest since I've been on council. What really worries me too, in that sense, is government already has kind of been looking at us to take over the paratransit, and they've been kind of sliding, in essence, slowly for us to take over. Yes, we've been doing a very, very good job, and within our Human Rights Commission tells us that we've been doing a good job, but we can't do that by ourselves. And there's no way in the world that we, in the cities, have enough funds to get the service to where it's supposed to be, and to look after our citizens that don't have the chance to move around as freely as we can. So again, the low income and people with disability and marginalized are going to be suffering. What would I do? Well, hopefully somebody can, friends of mine win a million or billion and then hand it over, but that's not going to help either, because we're dealing with a situation that we were not informed or asked what we need to do, what is it that we like? Imagine yourself, you know, come home and all of a sudden you are told you gotta do this. You can't do that. Because this kind of direction to municipalities, it hurts. Because we can only, we can only go after the, go after me as a homeowner, and few little services that we have, and some little cash that we get. So if we're looking at the buildings that are standing there, they're not paying any tax, and I'm going to be asking for my taxpaying citizens, saying, "I want more from you," and they're going to point to some couple of big buildings that use quite a bit of that water and the sewer and all other things. So what do I say? I don't know. Honestly, I do not know. I'm not confused, don't, don't, I'm standing here, I am not confused. I'm scared. I'm scared of the future, not just for today, for tomorrow. The SUMA is working out things, as the councils that sit on it, mayors are looking at things. But what do we do? 10th of April, we're going to have to come up with a decision. So I'm going to lean on the administration and the citizens to tell me what we should do. And again, like, tell the government. And the biggest thing is, we as councillors, as a city politician, we are the closest to the people, but yet our hands are tied. We are, we are creatures of the province. We do what they tell us. So what happens if all of a sudden we don't want to play nice in the sandbox? What does that mean? I'm not laughing, seriously. What does that mean? What can I do? Can I grab that sand and throw it up? Well, they have goggles on, who knows? So what does that mean? So I am very frustrated with this. I, as a councillor, should not be put in this position from a government that had all the resources or whatever's out there. And again, I will state it, as a municipality, we are creature of the province. So what can I do? Do I, I'm going to now jump in the ring and I have a five-ounce glove and they've got 10? How do I fight that? So, Your Worship, I'm going to cut this short, I'm going to, I'm going to be done. I don't know. I'm going to be looking around for, for help, because honestly, I don't want to make the decision, but I'm going to have to. I'm going to need the help. And I know I'm going to get help from the administration, from the council mayors, and everyone around, and the citizen of Regina, our industries, our, our everyone, from all workers, from former unionized workers, from private sectors, everybody. We need to get together now. This is the crucial time of our existence and of our survival. What do we do? We can stand here and talk about a whole bunch of things. When we talked about to make the right decision, what that's going to be, it's going to be very interesting to see. And I, like I said before, I'm on a toboggan, or not a toboggan, I'm on the roller coaster in the front seat, and it's going to be a heck of a ride. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fundura. The next speaker I have is Counselor Bryce.
Thank you. So downloading is a word you heard me say often during the budget debate, and I'm going to say it again tonight. Here we are again, more downloading onto the city, not just our city, but all the cities and communities around Saskatchewan, but because I represent Regina, I'm going to focus on us. Here we have $13.7 million more downloading. Downloading because of the province's budget woes. It's now our problem. And we're not the only ones, as I said. There's only one taxpayer. Instead of the province doing what they needed to do to control their budget and make the tough decisions that need to be made, and we've already made tough decisions. Couple of weeks ago, couple of months ago, we made tough decisions when it came to our own budget. So we've already done that. If the province wanted the taxpayers of Saskatchewan to pay more money, to pay more taxes, they should have been the ones to make that decision and make them pay more taxes, or whatever cuts they thought. Instead, that has also been downloaded to us. Okay? We now have the dirty job of increasing taxes or making cuts. We have our $13.7 million, there's $600,000 for the Regina Public Library that's now not there, so we have to do something about this unfortunately. So I'm going to go through a couple of recent, well, a couple of recent downloads. Some of them recent, some of them not so recent, but I'll just pick a few. The list is too long for us to actually finish off in five minutes, so I'm not going to do the whole list, but I'll pick a few. West Nile, we're now responsible for doing that. That's $250,000 a year. Dutch Elm Disease Control, we do that now too, $30,000 a year. Paratransit, which was from the provincial government to start with, even in 2010, they were paying 30%. 2016, it went down to 24%. The Urban Highway Connector Program, there's currently $20 million in backlog of refurbishment for assets that were transferred to us. We didn't have a choice about that. I didn't want the urban connectors. We didn't have a choice about that. The land for the new schools, that comes from our municipal reserve. We didn't get anything back for that. That comes from our taxpayers' money. There's also lots of other things. When you think of the social cuts that have been made, and the pressure that puts on our fire departments, our policing, our recreation facilities, all that sort of thing, it has impact on that. I think we need to take all these downloads and upload them back to the provincial government. We want to find $13.7 million? Upload these back, say, "No, I'm not going to take any more. No, I don't want an urban connector highway program. I don't want that. It's not our job to do that." Upload all this stuff back to the provincial government. That's how we solve this problem, with us. This problem's been downloaded to us, upload it back to the province. I'm tired of this. You guys heard me say this during our budget, I'm tired of the downloading, and it's got to stop. So as I said, upload it back to the province, that's my recommendation. I know we're not making recommendations right now, but that's my recommendation.
Well, Counselor Bryce, I think, as I mentioned, that the administration is taking notes here. We will not vote on them, but we will have a list compiled of the points being raised, and there have been some raised. Others will continue on, but it's not a vote, but you're duly noted, and I think there's a long list of downloads, both recent and in the past, that we can add to what you've just talked about. Thank you, Counselor Bryce. And other speakers? Counselor Stevens, I think you're ready to go. Counselor Stevens.
I'd just like to start with a couple of questions here for administration. The $600,000 that we are no longer going to be receiving from the provincial government for the libraries, what percentage of our library budget is that?
That's a separate authority. The money is actually a separate line item in our budget for libraries. We simply look at the budget and pass it, so it's their money, actually.
Anyone want to answer that? Just curious.
Through your worship, the mayor is correct in terms of the authority, but just in terms of their budget, the $600,000 decrease is about 2.6% of the library's revenue.
Thank you. Another question here, in the current provincial budget, what is being offered to cities to enhance the Housing First Initiative that's currently being run by the YMCA?
Through your worship, there is no funding being provided for that.
And is there any money in the current budget for enhancements of affordable housing initiatives or any kind of anti-poverty or homelessness initiatives in the city?
So through your worship, we don't have that information readily available? We have to go through the Sask Housing Budget and see what's being provided?
Thank you. I guess the point I'm trying to raise here...
If I might, just one more. I do have some information. Minister responsible for housing has used the term investing in the hard to house. And they reference for Regina, 80 units, $7.7 million, and $28.9 million with respect to housing generally below market housing. So I don't have details, but they are claiming they do spend money on hard to house, which is their version of, I suppose, homelessness. So there is some resources going in.
Thank you. So there is some reprieve. Thank you, Your Worship. I guess the point I wanted to raise here, if we look at the title of the budget, Saskatchewan Advantage, is really trying to define the province as having the lowest corporate tax rate and the lowest tax rate on manufacturing and processing in the country. I think it's great, with great irony, if you look at the messaging that we received from the provincial government, that the premier himself recognized that resource booms and the resource royalties created a bit of a financial addiction in our province. And it was used to finance income tax cuts. At the same time, it was used to enhance spending in some key areas, even though spending in other areas may have decreased. And what do we see in this budget? We see an increase in response to debt of regressive consumption taxes and further decreases in income taxes and corporate tax rates. So purposely amplifying the problem, while we're seeing now the offloading of expenses to ratepayers in our community through education taxes, simply enhancing the worst forms of taxation and offloading that onto those who are least able to afford it, as well as the municipalities. And if I were to kind of frame how I think and feel about this budget, certainly there's a great deal of concern in terms of what it means for the finances of our community and our city, but I'm reminded here of a quote by Angela Clark, who is a British writer and playwright, who responded to what it meant to see the erosion of funding of the British libraries, in which that Tory government was threatening to close down hundreds of these libraries. And she writes, "A library is not just a reference service, it is a place for the vulnerable. From the elderly gentleman whose only remaining human interaction is with the library staff, to the isolated young mother who refuses to, relishes the support and friendship that grows from a baby rhyme timed session to a slow-moving, thirty-something woman collecting her CDs, libraries are a haven in a world where community services are being ground to nothing. Libraries are vital, their worth cannot be measured in books alone." I like this quote, because it provides a really nice response to the Minister of Education, who says we're getting out of the bricks and mortar of library, and completely neglects the vital community and public service that the space of a library offers. It isn't just about accessing information. That cost is now being downloaded further onto our shoulders, and we have to make tough decisions about what are we going to do to make up for that shortfall, even though it is a separate line item. We have to think about this. Another quote that comes to mind is by Rahm Emanuel, who says, "You never want a serious crisis to go to waste." And I think that's really what we have here. We have a budget that responds to a fiscal crisis at the provincial treasury, and this crisis is being used to cut certain programs, cut salaries, to wind down public services like the Saskatchewan Transportation Corporation, which is critical in getting people from rural areas into our community. It's also being used to clawback serious amounts of funding from one of the pillars, one of the stewards of Wascana Authority, the University of Regina. Again, we're going to see these effects come down into the community level. So while we're, we should be mindful of what this means to our own treasury, I think what we need to see here is what is it going to mean for our community? We have some of the most acute forms of poverty and inequality in our city in this province. What's going to be done to make that better? Are cities now going to be expected to take on the responsibility of social programs and others, duties that we need to actually respond to the crisis that's being created by the province? So I think what I'm seeing here is the need to enhance the networks that we currently have at SUMA. I think we need to be vigilant and work in conjunction with our civic partners in other cities in this province to define a strategy. But I think for us in the city, we're going to have to make tough choices. Make sure that we keep the vital services that people request. And yes, we all hear about taxes, but some of us hear more about the need for more services, whether it's libraries, road maintenance, snow clearance. What do we do? Province has put something on our shoulders. A lot of people don't understand or focus on civic politics, and now we're going to bear the brunt of having to fund these programs that are no longer being adequately supported by our provincial government. by our, our provincial government. So I think Counselor Hawkins was correct. I think there is a lesson here for all of us, as well as the media, to ask these questions to the provincial leaders and to inform the population and our residents that it's not the city's fault that we're going to see certain services and programs put in jeopardy. And I think we need to have a united front here in our community and with other civic leaders to make this known. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Stevens. Counsel Bresciani.
Thank you, your worship. Um, just to start, I want to, first of all, say thank you to the administration, because I know this has been on the fly. We've been asking many questions and just trying to understand it all. And so it's nice to have some facts and some data, but also, um, to get the information out to the public tonight, I think is huge, about the budget, what it means for us as a city. And I know we're not to repeat anything that was kind of been, uh, already said, but I do agree with my colleagues that have spoken tonight about the downloading. But first I want to start, and let's just think about the city's unrest right now. People are very, very, very upset with their political leaders. And to me, that's unfair, because we trust our, trusting our provincial government to make the decisions for the best of the people. And as my colleagues spoke tonight, that this wasn't, this was not in any of the discussions. I know there was some talk, and we were a little bit worried about losing, um, some of the revenue sharing. And so, again, when this came up, the grant in lieu, $11 million, I mean, that's hard to find for, for any, um, municipality. But not just that, then we are, have to stand and face the public and our city and ask, "How can we make these cuts? Where will we make these cuts?" We've talked about downloading. Now, if we increase the mill rate, what are we doing? We're downloading on our, our people. Totally unfair. So tonight, I am going to be asking, will ask questions about how we can come to terms with this, our education. We've got our elderly who will be, um, also our, our, um, people who are low-income now that are going to be struggling. So I, I want to add, though, that I think, um, one of the most disappointing things is, as a government, I would hope that we would work together with our local government, our municipalities. We were all there at SUMA. They had us all there. It would have been a great opportunity to share some of these things that they are thinking about. As Barbara spoke, Counsel Young spoke, about coming together with the vision, making these decisions together. So it doesn't come that it's all, all of a sudden that we are totally unaware, and the municipalities around this province, and I speak on behalf of the whole province, there's a reason that SUMA is very, very, very upset about how this has been handled, and rightly so. So first of all, again, I just want to reiterate that, as, as Counsel Stevens said, um, we have to work together to come out with the bottom line that hopefully we can find, um, some kind of, of measure that will work and that's feasible. And, um, I agree with, with Mayor Fugere indicating that, you know, hopefully there'll be more talks that will come with the government to see that we can alleviate and take away from this $11 million, which is very, very, very unfair for us to try and take on and find. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Bresciani. Counsel O'Donnell.
Thanks. I want to begin by a couple of things. One is, I'm rather proud of my city. Rather proud of where I live. I'm very proud of the staff that served the city of Regina, and I stand by the decisions we've made for the last number of years as to where we are in the current financial situation that we have in our city. I'm very proud of that. We are an economic engine for this province. We attract business. We attract people in large numbers, and forecasts are for us to continue to do so. I'm very comfortable with our plan. When we do public engagement and we want to set a 25-year agenda, we invite thousands of people in, and in the end of that, we create a document called the Official Community Plan. We hold that up and we live by that. I'm particularly proud of a number of years ago when we had a vision statement created. And we often hear that phrase about inclusivity and attractiveness and so on. And other organizations adopt that and follow that and live by that. I'm very proud of that. Not so proud of some of the things I'm going to have to indulge in in the next few minutes. I'll try and hold my emotion in check. After listening to all of you, that is not so easy, because we should not sit here if you don't have passion. You should not be a leader if you don't have passion and don't care. Let's talk about education taxes first and foremost, if I could, please. Are we expecting, because we are the collector of education taxes, are we expecting an increase this year, please?
Mr. City Manager.
Through your worship, uh, with the changes in the Saskatchewan Tax Structure Policy, there'll be an additional $13.5 million of education taxes collected in Regina, and that's a 10.5% increase that will be shown on the property bill on behalf of the Ministry of Education.
Thank you very much. So I just want to follow that up. You might as well not sit down. We're going to do this a couple times.
Well, just, yeah. Remember, Counsel O'Donnell, this is not interrogation. You can sit down. You can sit down and relax.
I'm just looking for a rapid response to make these-
Not being cross-examined.
So, uh, 10.5%, do we have any control over that? In other words, can this people, they say, "Oh, no, we're not doing that." Can we do that?
Through your worship-
Counsel Bresciani.
No, we do not have any control over that.
I noticed, and other cities have projected a different number. Can someone explain to me why, it might be 10.5 in Regina, but I believe it was 17.6 or something in Yorkton? Can, can somebody explain to me the difference?
I'll refer that to Don Barr.
Thank you.
Mr. Barr.
Through your worship, uh, the provincial, uh, provincial government has two tax policy tools. One is the percentage of value, and they had recently changed the residential from 70 to 80%. And the other, uh, uh, tools that they have is they have individual mill rates by property class. So they've, uh, set different mill rates by property class, and depending on the mix of properties you have in your community, it will impact your community differently.
Thanks. So again, I just want to confirm for, for Counsel Fendur and the rest of us that get calls, are your property taxes going up? They are. And they are definitely going up on the education portion, and as confirmed by the city manager, 10.5%. And when I refer back, and this is where I'll ask for some referrals back, uh, we have, uh, we had a motion before us, before, where we talked about the property tax bill. I'd like to have that revisited, and I'll give you a couple of descriptors of how I'd like that revisited, uh, so that hopefully by April the 10th, we can look at that again. One, can we look at the notion of having two separate bills, please? One for the municipal portion and one for the, uh, education portion, please? And by the way, in municipal portion, I would include the, uh, library. I understand that as part of that, please? So if we could do that, and if that is, uh, not possible, can you give me some alternatives for this year? For example, if it happens to be one bill, can it be a letter of descriptor and so on? That's part of that. Further to this, I want to make a, a statement that I need to be verified at that time. It is my understanding that when property taxes for education are collected this year, they will go directly to the school boards and be used for education. That is my understanding. And that further to that, we will be able to charge a fee for that this year. But in the future, we expect that, one, we cannot charge a fee, and, two, the money will go to the general revenue fund of the province. If you could include that in your report back, I would appreciate that confirmation. Important note, goes back to the general revenue fund. I'll leave education for a minute. My second request refers, no, I won't, I shall stay in education. My second request refers to a previous motion that we have on the floor of council, and refers to the Northwest School Site. We asked administration to look into the cost for us to administer that program and getting that school up. I would like to, if possible, have that bill ready and prepared for the 10th for discussion, or if not, it's best forward, uh, progress, so we can, uh, hopefully send that bill on. That's on the Northwest School Site. The third comment, then, in terms of, of this list, it refers to the Urban Connector Program. Last year, we did a bridge, cost us $6 million. This year, we have another one in the budget for $6 million. If we are not too far down the road on that, can we pull it and not, not fix that bridge? Uh, that question? And if that is too far down the road, um, then I would ask that we get some reference on what would be the implications of not, uh, fixing the bridge next year, because there is two other bridges. I'll finish with two simple statements. We have, uh, references been made here with, uh, about the municipal operating grand net 1%. What I think you need to also know is that 1% is divided into a portion that goes to the northern communities, to urban communities, and to rural communities. And so that you all understand what an urban community is, it's anybody that lives in a city, a town, a village, or a resort village in the province of Saskatchewan. That is 80% of the population. On a per capita basis, every one of those 80% people receive $205. That's what that amount is. But if you live in an RM, the amount is $434. Okay? We are at a point where the provincial government, by law, after five years, must renegotiate how that split is. There's an opportunity. There's a very good opportunity. I'm going to leave Wascana Center alone for now, because I think it's been covered and covered well. Um, I, my simple comment at this point in time is, I don't think we have a say in the operation of the park, and that just kills me. Here's what I would like to do. If you'd all give me $5, so that it would cover the cost of the test paper, I would like to do this. I'd like to invite all the people of the legislature into an office over here, and I'd like to administer a test. And the test would go like this. Please tell me how municipalities are funded, because I don't think they understand. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel O'Donnell. Last speaker is Counsel Flagle.
Thank you. And, um, I also, I think Counsel Masonelli will probably want to say something too, so... But I won't be last, and you'll be last, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is a work in progress, and it is, um, it's not final. We're going to see some possible changes come forward, because I think from what I heard from the provincial government, there's a few things they're still trying to work the bugs out. So I'll keep my comments to things that we can do. But right now, if I look at an $8 million, it's a huge hit, and in, in next year, it'll be $11 million. So what do we do? And this is what we're here. Do we cut services, jobs, raise taxes to meet the needs? Do we stop projects, which we just finished talking about? And if I say et cetera, that could mean like 50 other things, so I'll leave it at that. I like how we talked about the reserves, and they are set aside for things outside of operating. If we didn't have reserves, we wouldn't be building Conexus Eventplex. We wouldn't be doing the Cooperators Center. We wouldn't have dug out Wascana Lake. We wouldn't have done a lot of projects around the city. We've got $11 million into the, um, um, the buildings for the International Trade Center. Uh, the list goes on and on. I mean, the bridge renewals and all that other kind of stuff. That's where we got the reserves from, and people criticize us for having those reserves. But if we're about to build a city, we have to do that. We have a stadium. We have a wastewater treatment plant that we didn't go into huge debt on because we had money put away in reserves. That's what reserves are used for. They're not meant to pay to repair potholes. And if that's as simple as we get it, that's where we got to go. What I, what I, what I'm trying to figure out is that if, if we took $8 million, it looks like we'd have to, um, so the citizens understand, there's a couple of things. If we raised taxes, it came back, and it came back at 4.5% mill rate, that would equate to about the eight, roughly the 8 million. That's a lot. But if you look at the 11 million that the provincial government has taken away from us, with a population of 223,000 people, it's $49.33 per person in the city of Regina that the provincial government has taken away from us. If we go by households, and I'm going to use 80,000 as the amount of doors that are considered taxable in residential, it's $137 a year per household. We raised the taxes last, um, two months ago, 3.9%, and I think the average was $65, $70 per household. And doesn't, I don't need the number right now, but it's somewhere in that range that the average was. This $11 million is $137 to the taxpayer that we, in this room, in this chamber, and with all the people around, have to figure out how we're going to absorb 8 million this year, 11 million next year, and who knows what the year after, at least 11 million, unless things change economically for the province. Could they have done things differently? Sure. We can, we can point fingers and do all kinds of things, um, but they can't decide to come back on the cities and say, "Well, you guys should do this, and you guys should do that," when they have done things that maybe have failed, and now they're asking us to do similar things by spending our reserves and not managing ourselves properly. I was a huge component or proponent of the core service review and wanted it even implemented quicker than it was, but we got it done, and we've been saving money every year, and, and these are the types of things that we do as a city to ma- maintain our stability and keep this city, as our vision says, vibrant, inclusive, et cetera, et cetera. So my only points are, and a lot of the people, everybody's kind of said it, is that when we go back and look at, we had a former counselor turned MLA that always used to stand here and say, "Give us back our $10 million that you've taken away for the past 10 years. It's over $100 million." Uh, the, the person who got in is an MLA, and it was like gone, zeroed. That's what we need to key on, is that this is not just today. Counsel Bryce brought up some good points about it. This is an ongoing thing that's been going on, on, and they, on forever, since I've been on council since '03, because the, the former counselor was talking about it well before I was even here. And I just think that it's a, it's a shame that we have to come to this today, but what I'm going to look to is in, on the 10th of April, that our administration somehow comes up with a formula. I don't want to see job losses. I don't think Regina is in an STC world where we have to cut 223 jobs or whatever it was just to do whatever they're doing with that particular thing. I know it wasn't a great, uh, asset for them, but we can't be looking at job cuts, because we are running, I think, as inefficient a ship as I think we possibly can, and, uh, and doing a fine job, because our service rates and our, our surveys to the customers have been, we've been getting flowers beyond belief compared to five and 10 years ago. So kudos to what the city's doing so far. We're going to have to retool. I'm looking forward to the 10th. Well, looking forward to it is another statement, but I'm looking forward to being able to look at ourselves and say, "We are doing a great job, but we can change this and do this." And if it's called a bailout to the province, so be it. Uh, we have to run our own ship, but we can also use some help. And hopefully, like I said at my beginning, the work in progress is not done on the provincial side, because I think they have time and room to back up some of the things that they've done. Uh, the SUMA RM, um, scenario has to be looked at again provincially, so we need to look at a whole bunch of things, not just what's in our own house. So appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel Flagle. Uh, my apologies, Counsel Masonelli. You're next.
It's quite apparent by the regime of downloads and tax implications that the government's playing politics with equality of life and trying to hide responsibility for the fiscal reality we're facing, uh, trying their best to make us the grim reaper of the tax world today. Whether it's grants in lieu or the removal of money towards ice sheets, the province has taken $11 million from our budget this year, and we need to find a long-term solution, because it's an ongoing problem, and to reset the new normal and move forward. One of my residents advised me, he was not in any way, in any favor of any increases. He's sick of government and taxes, and he didn't want to pay anymore. And I can certainly understand that point and that feeling. But the reality is, that's kind of like saying the cost of running a golf course went up, and instead of watering the greens, they're just going to let them dry out, and then you don't have much of a golf course. And I enjoy our city, and I want to live in a nice city, not an ugly one. Our streets are stressed already. We have infrastructure that's past prime that we're contending with and dealing with the best we can. We have solutions in place, and it's been well-planned. Uh, we're still adjusting to the growth so proudly touted by the province and the amount of stress that puts on our infrastructure and fills up our city, and we, we haven't, we haven't expanded to adjust for that yet. That takes money, and now we've had money taken away. The last survey conducted by the city indicated citizens were satisfied somewhat with their services, but they would increase a higher level of service in trade for a modest tax increase. Well, any chance of us obtaining that is kind of- Well, any chance of us obtaining that is kind of been put by the wayside now by the new normal we've been presented with. Being it's not just a one-time tax hit, but significantly changes the new norm, I guess we know what transformational is now, meaning it's permanent and ongoing. We need to take a multi-pronged approach, whether it be a portion offset by reserves for the short term to take some of the pain away this year, or a reexamination of services going forward, which I really wouldn't be in favor with, because I think that residents need our services. One thing I have noticed is the province readjusted its education taxes in proportions between sectors, and maybe that's something we can mimic in our own tax regime to kind of look at how they've planned corporate and commercial operations as opposed to residence, and maybe we can save some of the pain that way. It seems to be something they've planned for. Another sad point is, right now, with the federal government's regime, there's many federal dollars available for infrastructure projects. But right now, you need dollar for dollar to tap those projects, and what a poor time to be short-changed in the whole process. It really makes it hard to grow and hard to achieve things, when you have to have money available to tap infrastructure money. So I guess I too am looking forward to the next meeting and coming to some resolution with these problems. And I think we're going to come to an innovative solution and come through this.
Thank you, Counselor Masonelli. That is the list of speakers. So I'd ask Counselor Stevens to take the chair again, please.
Worship.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just a couple of concluding comments, and I do have some thoughts to throw back at the administration, too. So I think we can see we have some frustrated and angry councillors, and frustrated in Counselor Mayor, that we have these changes that are brought about without consultation to us, and will deal with this in our budget next month. I'm meeting with Minister Hoppar, Minister Hargrave, Minister Doherty on Wednesday afternoon at the legislature. This is a request I made with the minister last week. The mayor of Saskatoon will be there, as will the mayor of Yorkton, who is also the chair of the City Mayor's Caucus. We'll be meeting with those ministers. Going into that meeting, the purpose that I would have, and I'm sure that I can speak for every member of this council, is that we want this decision on Grants and Lew to be reversed. Simply reverse the decision and do what's right. I'm not sure where we're going to get, but that's my, my plan to be there, to say that, and that's what I think we would want to see here. I want to stress the fact that, that we as a council understand, in a smaller measure, the circumstance the province is in today. Because each and every year, we have a tremendous amount of asks for our resources and never enough money to do it. That's why our reserves are so precious to us, so we can continue to invest in infrastructure. When the province, when the federal government says we're prepared to invest in a bus barn, well, where does that money come from? It doesn't come from taxpayers this year. It comes from prudent financial planning and reserves that are meant to seize the opportunity. These are so important for us. So we, we understand the measure of that. And the budget has good things in it, too, with revenue sharing. I share Counselor Hawkins' analysis of that, but I would say in general terms, you continue to see this movement of money toward us. But we're here to govern this city, and we've been dropped this issue of $11 million, this hole to fill. So we're in a very, very difficult circumstance, no question about it. So I'm going to throw out a couple of, of ideas quickly here for the administration. And I would ask that we look at, at annual exemptions, in particular, especially to those that do apply to provincial-owned properties, but not limited to that. I think we should look at, and I think this may get part of what Counsel O'Donnell spoke about, but I want to raise the issue of, of the value or the market value of the land that these new schools sit on, that we would be able to receive market value for that in terms of rent, if you will, or payment back to us. I'm very interested in seeing the split in education taxes and how we do that, and I would urge that, that we pursue what Counsel O'Donnell talked about, an actual double bill sent out. But if we end up coming to, I hope we don't do this, but if we do come to a tax increase that we have to put on, on the municipal portion, I'd want a separate line using the term municipal, or, sorry, provincial levy. So it's clear, as clear as we can make it, that's the reason why we're doing more than 3.99%. Mr. City Manager, you and I spoke about this briefly earlier. I want to be clear, this is, this notion of a freeze for hiring permanent positions at the discretion of the city manager would be for, as I just said, permanent positions, not seasonal work in the summertime to get the work done, until we have an understanding of what this $11 million looks like in terms of backfilling that. So those are the ones I'd like to have a look at, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I do want to find, say, say, find one other thing that I move my motion for referral. This is not just the city of Regina that is concerned. In my time on council, 20 years, I have never seen or heard of the unanimous one voice from virtually every mayor across this province. Because the changes in, that are being made here, that are being suggested, hit other communities even harder than us. Grants and Lew are causing a huge problem for the city of Yorkton, is one example. So it's not just us, it is voices all over the province. I hope the province is listening. I hope they come to understand that a compromise is needed here. This is not necessary, it's not needed, it's easily avoided. $38 million for them is not a lot, but it is huge for urban municipalities. I hope they will do that. That's my message to the mayors, or sorry, to the ministers when I see them on Wednesday afternoon. Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'd like to move a referral motion, that the city, that the city manager come back to the April meeting, April 10th meeting of city council with a revised 2017 budget, taking into account the comments made by members of council. So this is a referral motion that's not debatable, but I do need a secondary.
Secondary? Counselor Hawkins?
You have a motion? All in favor? Opposed?
Motion carries.
I believe it was carried unanimously. Thank you very much for that. Thank you very much, everyone. Before I adjourn the meeting to the administration, are we clear on the, the ideas and suggestions that were brought forward by members of council? Is it clear?
Through your worship, I've seen a team taking notes, so I'm sure that when we come back in April 10th, we'll have addressed the items that you have asked us to review.
Now, strictly speaking, this is not in usual order, but I'm going to ask any other member of council, if they have any other suggestions that we can offer to the administration. And I would ask that it not be a dissertation simply as, I want to look at X, because technically the debate is over. But I do want to make sure that we have something else in mind, that you, that you have in mind, you don't, you have an opportunity to say it now. Counselor Flagel.
Yeah, I just, just to say what the city manager said, just the list. If there's anything else that you and your team think of that would help us out, because there's some things maybe that we aren't always purview on, smaller things that could make an adjustment, you know, a couple million here, you know, if somebody's closed closet and that type of thing. But seriously, though, I think if, if the city looks at this and the administration, I think maybe there'll be some $100,000, $400,000, $300,000, all of a sudden it adds up to a million bucks. Maybe we can deal with those kinds of things, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flagel. Counsel Murray?
Thank you, worship. It's not so much a question, just more of a suggestion as well, to make sure you call your MLAs. Excellent.
Thank you for that. End of tweet, yes. Counselor Stevens?
I know we're not projecting what will actually, oh, yeah, that's right. Got to get rid of that thing. I know we're not here to project exactly what we want, but I would actually like us to look at the feasibility of differential mill rate increases by property class. So the potential for commercial versus residential and other classes having different increases, if we're talking about a mill rate.
I might suggest that that actually is a report that's coming to council, independent of this review. I mean, it's, it's part of the reassessment, and that debate can take place then. Either way, we'll get it done, so, okay.
Counsel O'Donnell?
This is not actually for the administration, but for us. Perhaps it'd be time to meet with the Regina caucus.
That, that will happen. I have to meet with the ministers.
Counselor Burchany?
Just one thing for administration as well. If you, and I know we've discussed, I don't know if this is an assumption, but, I mean, we've already looked at our own budget, but if you think that there's anything else that was missed in there, as far, I, I'm sure that that's, you're going to go back to the drawing board, looking at everything else that was approved, from service partners to whatever. We'll leave that in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Masonelli?
I guess I was always wondering about billing for time for non-emergency services, for Regina City Police showing up at accidents that could be built to SGI, as well as Fire Department showing up at accidents to clean up spills. Non-emergency, of course, but that's all time and manpower.
That's good. Thank you very much for that. I, I might have another one as well, in terms of, I'm not sure if this is even in order, but it just, it's a reflection of, of our crowns paying for the services that they receive. And we could look at, and we have models for costing of a fire service, both to Sacre Mai First Nation and the GTH, for fire, police, water sewer, any additional cost that we, that, that for some reason we, we don't offer of market value, we should start billing Everyone's okay? Counsel Bryce?
I'll move adjournment.
A secondary for adjournment, please. Counsel Young? All those in favor? Repose, carry. Thank you very much to council and to the administration, and I want to thank the delegation that were going to be here tonight, that will be here tomorrow night, for their patience in letting us proceed with an emergency issue of council. Thank you very much, everybody, and have a great evening.